Twenty-four, meeting of the Oshkosh Council. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Flom.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Mayor Mookerhour is excused absent. Esslinger.
Here.
Bulo.
Here.
We have six present.
Thank you. And leading us in the invocation tonight is Councilmember Flom.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to the city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
Thank you. And leading us in the pledge tonight, we have a couple students from Lakeside Elementary going to join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have Easton. Come right up here. Turn around, face your parents so they can... And Gonther. So a couple certificates for you guys. Thank you very much for the help tonight. And then, like I said, I'm going to give you the mic if you want to call a favorite teacher, favorite subject.
My favorite subject is math and my favorite teacher is Ms. Bignow.
My favorite subject is science and my favorite teacher is Mrs. Leclerc.
Love to hear math and science is the favorite, so good job. Thank you, kids.
Thank you.
All right, you have one proclamation here that Matt has already issued, but I want to make sure it gets right into the record. It is on the Extra Mile Day, November 1st, 2024. Whereas Oshkosh, Wisconsin is a community which acknowledges that special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Oshkosh, Wisconsin is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Oshkosh, Wisconsin is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate the individuals and organizations within the community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Oshkosh, Wisconsin acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2024. Now therefore, I, Carl Bulo, on behalf of Matt Mookerhour, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2024 as Extra Mile Day in the City of Oshkosh. I urge each in the community to take time on this day not only to go the extra mile in their own life, but also to acknowledge those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. Thank you. All right, leading off tonight, we have a couple presentations. Leading us off is Go EDC with Ms. Rathmerl.
All right, thank you very much. First of all, I just wanted to state, start by saying thank you for, of course, being a partner for Greater Oshkosh EDC and all of the relationships that we have and what builds our organization. As many people know, we are a public-private nonprofit, which means that we are supported, of course, by the City of Oshkosh and have a, you know, a specific set of services that we do on behalf of the city, and we are always proud to be that partner. So just, and you do have the packet, I sent it, I sent the presentation around, so feel free to look at it, but I just wanted to start off by touching on kind of who we are and why we're here. So Greater Oshkosh EDC, of course, we are here to be the leading economic development agency. Our goal is to drive productivity for our community, but again, focusing on how that impacts the whole, both our public and our private side. But one of the things I really wanted to focus on here before I jump into what we've been doing is the core values that we have as an organization. So as you see across the bottom there, those core values are really what leads a lot of how we do, what we do for the city. Our leadership, we want to be responsive to the needs and also the changes that are happening in our economy. The accountability that we have to both the community and our businesses that we work with, the innovation that we want to drive throughout all of the different areas, whether it be new ways to develop or driving new businesses, new engagement. And then, of course, that last one I think is really important is the collaboration, because we become better by working together. So that is one of, some of the key things that we have there at Go EDC. So I just wanted to start to a little bit, we, what I'm going to do tonight for you is I'm actually going to kick back and look back at what we've been doing for the last few years. We're wrapping up a strategic plan and we're in the process of actually launching our next plan, so I'll spend a little time talking about what we've done in our last strategic plan and then the process we're going through right now to get ready for our next plan. So this plan that we've just coming out of, we're wrapping up COVID 2020. We're trying to figure out what that new normal was and a lot of those challenges that we were seeing at that time was supply chain. Our employers were facing massive employment vacancies. Some people were saying 10% to 15%, you know, employment needs that they had, open positions that they had within their organization. Today, they've shifted a little bit, and we've seen this over the last year to two years, is what we're continuing to see is yes, talent is an issue, not quite where we were seeing it, you know, three years ago, but we continue to see that the talent issue is that we know our workforce is growing smaller, not necessarily growing larger, and that we need, we have a big need to retain that talent. And then how are we also attracting new talent here? But when that comes, what we're looking at as well is just what are we doing to make sure that talent is what we need in terms of the skills for our businesses, in terms of, you know, the ability to teach what we currently have, what's coming up? And that goes right into number two, because our evolving technologies are changing fast and there's a lot of different ways that we are now working between automation, AI, things are coming into our workplaces that are impacting the way and the skills that our employees need. Kind of on that same topic, our housing needs are continuing to be a very big issue. We cannot attract that talent and keep them here if they don't have a place to live. So the housing study that the city did was a very timely project to do to help us evaluate really what we need and where we're going forward, but we continue to look at what types of housing we need for the different types of employees that we want to have or the type of people that we want to live here. So it's not just about that inventory, but it's also matching that inventory with the type of workforce employees that we have. And the last one I put on there is that competitive markets. So our markets continue to be, and this comes in so many different ways, inflation has made our markets incredibly competitive when you look at supply chain and how we're being able to bring in the different, what all the different supply chain and the different resources that we need for our businesses to be successful. We also look at interest rates and how they've made us very competitive in our, in our markets and how we're able to, you know, drive development and move forward. And then just within our neighborhoods, how we are competing with our fellow neighbors from, you know, the others up the highway, down the highway, maybe even a state over. One of the things that we're learning quickly is that growth is focused around that workforce, like I said, but we're not so much about where the good jobs are, it's where the people are. Jobs are going to people, which we've talked about historically, people went to jobs, right? You created jobs, people went there, and now we're in, and kind of turned on our heads where jobs are going to people. And so we need to be able to bring people here and have them want to stay here as a community. So, and when I talk about competitive markets, I know that if there's things that we aren't doing to make ourselves competitive, our neighbors are. So we have to make sure that we're, we're thinking forward-focused. So those are some of the current challenges that we're seeing, but just to kind of review back of what we've been doing with our strategic plan. So over the last three years, we've kind of maintained this is our core of what we've kind of been working on over the years, but staying in this element. Existing business has always been our priority, so business retention and expansion has been huge in the last few years, especially looking at how we help our existing businesses grow when they're facing these workforce challenges, when they're facing supply chain challenges, and making sure that this is the best place for them to expand their business, not to take it someplace else. Workforce development has always been, again, a focus as we look at how we recruit that talent. We focus a lot on barriers the last few years. Transportation had been one that we've been, had been addressing, but childcare popped up in the last, in probably since about 2021, when that one really hit the market hard. We saw childcare becoming a significant barrier, so addressing those barriers to employment. Entrepreneurial growth is how we make sure we're, again, looking at innovation and moving forward. So programs like our capital catalyst program, working with startups and collaborating with Fox Valley Tech and UW Oshkosh on their programs to help nurture entrepreneurs in our city. And then lastly, targeted industry and community development is how we're looking to grow. So what can we do to make sure that we have a diverse industry, that our industry clusters work well together? And then also focusing on, like I mentioned before, what our community, and that is a community where people want to be. So a couple of statistics for you, again, we're just, we haven't quite wrapped up our 2024s yet, so we went back to our 2023 statistics to show you a little bit how we're getting this done, some of the KPIs that we've had. Last year we did 24 in-depth business retention and expansion visits. That's where we spent a significant amount of time with the business, learning about it, understanding what their future is, and looking for red flags, green flags usually. But overall, we had over 400 different business touchpoints. That's any time that we engage with a business, you know, intentionally, so whether it was a phone call, an email, exchange of information, it was actually a direct communication that we had with the business in the area. Fifteen different custom project services, and that's where we help businesses kind of work through if they're having expansion. We work with the city, we work with them and on what challenges that we're having and making sure that we're moving that along as smoothly as possible. And then 40 RFIs, requests for information, is when we have people who are interested in coming into our city or into our area, and we can submit them with information about available properties, buildings, lands, et cetera. As I mentioned before, we try to tackle that childcare issue and in partnership with a handful of other nonprofits in the Oshkosh area, we got a Dream Up grant, which ended up creating 146 new childcare spots here in the City of Oshkosh. That was actually a grant that came from the state to try to address childcare issues, and we were able to put that into, I think it was 18 different existing childcares or new childcares to create new spots for them. And then, of course, we always keep that unemployment rate on there because that's some of those challenges that we're facing. When you have a 2.7% interest or unemployment rate, essentially means that we're at full employment, because you're always going to have a little bit of that overlap. So we know that we're at the point right now where we need people for the jobs that we have here, and we need to be able to recruit people to our area. So just a couple highlights on different projects or initiatives that we did in the past year or so. To give you an idea on that business development side, that data care development was actually many years in the progress, but that started with Go EDC when they reached out to us to find out we're a good site. So we had submitted several sites to them. We didn't know exactly who it was, but we had a pretty good idea at the time. We had a little bit of an idea, but we were able to work with their site selector to try to find an appropriate site here in Oshkosh, and the site that they selected was actually one that we had suggested to them. So, and then I want to talk about Myers Aviation, because I think this is a great project to talk about as well, as we look at how our existing businesses and retaining them. Myers came to us, the few employees for the business wanted to purchase it from the existing owners, longstanding employers, employees, and we worked with them so that way they could purchase that business, kept that business local, and they've actually been able to do a lot of work in the last 18 months to really grow and put even more life into that business, so. I know that one of the questions that, when this first came up, when Matt asked if we would present, was about our loan funds. So part of those programs that we run is we do have two loan funds on behalf of the City of Oshkosh that we administer. So our access capital funds, the revolving loan fund is for existing businesses, and the capital catalyst is for those new businesses that are either startup entrepreneur, some of that business entrepreneurship through acquisition falls into this category too, because those are new business owners, even though it's an existing business. So these results that you see up here is actually the lifetime of the program. We've been administrating this program since 2015, the RLF program, but what I love to see about this is yes, we're supplying those loan funds and we really treat that like gap financing, but of the $2.1 million that we've dispersed out in loans, it has actually resulted in over $11 million of capital investment. So that's how we see those dollars put to work, by bringing businesses to the area, but then also making them successful and bringing additional, additional capital investment here. So, again, just kind of our overlap of what we look, when we roll up and we say, what have we done in the last almost 10 years, we're sitting here now? We've created over 1,000 jobs, we've retained over 2,000 jobs, and that 3.375 million dollars is that net capital investment for our area, and that comes from machinery, that comes from real estate, that comes from building expenses, and that all rolls in together. The number that we really like to say is for every dollar that's been invested into Go EDC has turned into $95 right back into our community. So it is truly an investment that's made with our organization, and we want to put that back in the community. And these are some of our investors and partners, so you can take a look, we have that in front of you, who actually we work with and supports our organization. So then what's next part? I wanted to spend more time on this, but we're not quite ready to release this plan to the public. We're still in that refinement phase, we're almost there, but this past summer, we actually spent some time doing a feasibility study, taking a look again at what kind of economic development we need for our area. We focus a lot on what the business needs were, as well as what our public needs were from our different municipalities. So that has been refined back into a plan. This new plan is going to be very agile. We want to realign with what we need in the area. We want to make sure that we are really focusing on growth and how we're finding that growth for our existing businesses and especially that population in our, in our workforce. And then also, we just really want to be future-oriented. We want to continue to look at what we need as a community, and just like you, sometimes we have to think not just about today, we have to think what tomorrow needs. So we really want to make sure that we're setting up a community that makes us dynamic. So this next year, this next plan compared to three-year plans we've been running is going to be a five-year plan, and we want to make sure that we are looking at the next five years to really situate ourselves as solid as we can as we head out, you know, into the end of this, of the twenties, so, yeah. Questions? I think I'm...
Yeah, any questions from Council? Councilmember Flom.
Thank you. Well, I very much appreciate you being here. I just want to congratulate Go EDC with their work on the data care project. It's coming along quite nicely, and a third floor is going to go up, so it's great to see. One of the questions I have, and I know this is kind of intergovernmental, but the aviation business park, that's one of the worst-performing TIF districts, if not the worst-performing TIF district in the city. I don't think there's any warm leads, at least last time I checked. You will know more than I do on that front, but at what point would Go EDC recommend a rezone for other options than just aviation-related businesses? I know the county has something to do with it as well, but at least on the city side, this is looking like something that's becoming a white elephant, and we need to get a little bit creative on what to do next.
Yep, very, very well stated. We have continued to look at that and working with the city staff on what that project should look like. One of the things that I said when I came in is I said, let's make sure that we actually give this a really good effort to exhaust, because aviation was identified as one of those targeted industries for our area, and that was done back in the DoD grant that we did a couple of years ago. So we had put some effort into aviation prior. I wanted to bring some of the knowledge that we had in my team to try to give it one more go. So post-COVID, we did, we have made a pretty concerted effort of working with site selectors. Now we have about, you know, we, like you said, hot leads, we have one or two that come up every once in a while, and so we've had some people that are interested, but we haven't had anybody to, you know, actually purchase. So that has been something of discussion. We are limited on what we can do on the county side, but we aren't as limited on the city side, and we continue to work with city staff as to when is the right appropriate time to put something that is outside of that zoning or outside of that specified zoning into that area.
Well, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah, I'm just going to use this opportunity to talk about my favorite subject, housing. I think you brought it up a number of times in your PowerPoint that it's a barrier, it's something that we need, and I really just want to call to that 2.7% unemployment rate. I mean, that is astoundingly low. I think the state is at 2.9 today, a little higher depending on who you go with, but I mean, full employment is somewhere from 5% to 7%, right? So we're way underneath that. We need people here, we need workers. Nobody's sitting on the sideline right now. Oshkosh is working, and we need to build housing to make sure we can get people here. So whenever I'm sitting up here, touting, we need to get more housing, we need more people here, this is one of the prime examples of why. We need to make sure our workforce is being filled, is growing. If we don't have the people, we don't have the jobs to be filled, so. So thank you for highlighting that, that's all I wanted to point out, so.
I was just going to say that I think it's something that, from an economic development standpoint, probably wasn't our radar when our organization was started 10 years ago, but today it is something that we continue to look at. And again, what we say, what we're not, what we're not doing, our neighbors are, so making sure that we're staying competitive in these markets, because incentivizing housing and getting the right type of housing into these, into their communities is something that most forward-thinking communities are doing right now.
Well, if you're going to call out also numbers, I'm going to call out one or two. That 146 new childcare spots, people can't go to work if they don't have a place for, you know, to drop off the kids, so I think that's absolutely amazing. I know that's projects that we've been looking at from the city council, because it keeps bubbling up to us too, so amazing job on that, glad to see that.
Thank you, and I can't hit the collaboration on that one enough, because that was a large partnership between United Way, the Chamber of Commerce, the Community Foundation was participating in getting that grant, so there's a lot of us that came together to get that grant. It had to be a cohort, it had to be a collaborative grant, so that was one of the ways that being collaborative makes us competitive.
Absolutely. Anything else? All right, thank you much.
Thank you.
And the next presentation, probably less flowery, but I believe it's the update on the City Hall facility study?
I would say that's a matter of opinion, Mr. Davenport Mayor, but from staff's standpoint, it's a very interesting project, and John Wallencamp with Cooney Architects is the firm that was retained to do this analysis, and I'm just going to let John take it over from there. John's worked with us on several projects, including the public works garage, as well as the parks administration and field operations facility. So I gave enough time for John to start distributing, and John, take it away, please.
Great, good evening. Thanks for having me here. Yeah, as Mark mentioned, we're here to kind of give an update on the space needs assessment update. A lot of information, but really the goal tonight is to make sure you guys hear where we're at, kind of take it back, digest it, and get questions and answers so we can bring answers back to you. The team from our offices, myself, Randall, Shane, and Monica that have been working on the project, but I can tell you more importantly, it's been the divisions and department staff members that have participated and given us incredible feedback to help us bring kind of the report together to where it's at today. By no means is it complete, but we got at least to a level that we're very confident the square footages that we're going to be presenting tonight make sense, which leads us to the multiple options we're going to talk about. The goal tonight is to talk about those three options, primarily three options that we're talking about, is existing city hall, city center, and some additional site out there, a 17-acre site, some are close within the proximity of centers of the city. So those are the three major options we're going to talk about and kind of from start to finish, we'll end from the square footages that go with each one. Each one has its unique characteristics I'll go over, and more importantly, each one carries a different price tag. Making sure you understand the current and future needs, there are many. As it stands today, there's a lot of divisions and departments that have immediate needs. The important thing to realize about that is you're doing the right thing right now is game planning for the future, but also need to remember if nothing happens in the future, you still have current needs that you, I think you need to start looking at of how you manage and take care of. Understand the process we went through. This process, I've been doing this for 33 years, our firm is specialized in this, it's a process we feel really works well. And the reason it works well is it's a proven process that you're not overbuilding or underbuilding. This is a process that takes a lot of money, but it also, if it's done right, it saves you money. So as we go through this process, we'll also be introducing payback methods, things that you can see that through efficiencies, they actually help pay back. Now, it doesn't print money payback, but what it helps is in staff productivity or staff efficiencies, or maybe not even have to hire that half a staff member to fill a position, because we can operate a little bit more efficient. So those are the payback things that I would be talking about. Bottom line, get any questions? And then if I can't provide the answers tonight, in a later session, come back with answers for you. This is just the beginning. As I said, we're just here to kind of get you going, to see what we've been going through. Current and future growth. So what we did is we met with every staff and division member to kind of talk over where they're at today and where they need to be. You'll see later on in the presentation, the documents that we put together to do that. The big thing here in the city is employee-to-citizen interaction. This building, as it was originally designed as a school, 1915, 1960 turned into city hall, has a lot of space that you can kind of congregate and move about this building, not the best thing to be in today's environment. ADA, a lot's been done for handicap accessibility, but there again, you're not there. This report, when we're done with it, you'll at least have the roadmap of what you need to do by law to kind of slowly build up a future ADA-compliant building. Improve facility maintenance. Maintenance, as you guys know, is a budget number every year, so our goal is to improve that, but also improve the money you spend every year on maintenance. Modernize the building access and security. That's a primary number-one thing we need to start looking at. A lot of areas, as I talked about, you can go anywhere in this building and be anywhere. Our goal is to limit that circulation. And then bottom line, we looked at this facility and how the square footage was not the best laid out, because it was a school. We have a lot of circulation space that we were able to wrap up into actual usable space, and as I go through the plan, I'll point that out. And bottom line is something needs to be done eventually, and as the eventually goes, it goes with cost increase. So as I present the numbers, you'll see those are numbers to 2027, but if this goes to 30, the numbers just keep going up. So at some point, it's just good future planning, how you want to tackle the situation you're in. This illustration isn't really meant to have you see exactly the numbers, but it's telling the story of what we did. So with each division and department head, we analyzed every worker and every individual, how they need to work within the facility. Are they in an office currently now? Do they need an office? What size office should they have? Everything was looked at that way, and these were dialed in by municipal standards that we've used over the years, but then also looking at, you know what, engineering may need a little bit more space, because they're dealing with plans, so not everything's locked into that. We customize it for each user, too. To future employees, I can tell you, the first run-through with the group, I came back and said, you guys are being way too conservative. I've done this way too long to tell me you need nobody or one was... So we worked with them and talked and created different scenarios in the plan, like, okay, in the future, we're going to need two spots. Well, that might be a smaller conference room right now, but in 10 years, that conference room turns into office. So we were very conservative how we did it. Or the conference room might be within the department's proper area, and in the future, that turns into a community conference room. So all different scenarios we looked at. As I talked, the standards, we went through these boilerplate pieces here to know exactly how an individual office would lay out, how that individual office functions. So are we able to do a little bit larger office with a four-person conference room, conference table? So we were able to save a larger conference room, so all those scenarios were looked at and studied. The big thing we kept hearing at the facility here is we have a lack of meeting spaces. So that was one of the biggest things you'll see in the plan as we go through, how we tackle that, and also try to position those in that we have very little footsteps for the public that are coming to visit city hall needed to travel to get to it. The current city hall site, which is what we're calling Option 1, has a current footprint, so the orange image you're seeing there, that's the current footprint of city hall, it's a little over 12,000 square feet. The yellow to the plan north of that talks about a 2,700-square-foot addition. So in our master plan, what we figured out is that the, we're looking at in addition to, like I said, plan north, the first floor footprint is smaller than floors 2, 3, and 4, mainly because the ADA access to the building, instead of having that internal, we actually would introduce all that external, but still over the roof of the building. The upper right is the facilities maintenance facility, 7,500 square foot per floor, analyze that. When we got into the program, Oshkosh Media, relieving the pressure of Oshkosh Media from this building and moving them into a remodeled section out there, we felt was the best position. They have a lot of outdoor or direct access from the public inside, so it, plan-wise, it worked well. So as we go through all options 2 and 3, I'll highlight that, how that makes a difference in options 2 and 3. But that's 15,000 square feet. 7,500 square feet of that alone is archive cold storage, which is out there now. Part of the present, part of the cost sheets, got a good dollar amount to scan documents that just need to be... documents that just need to be documented and then the paper copy thrown away. But there's a lot of documents that need to stay retained within the city, and they'll constantly be moving. So that 7,500 square feet will always be a need for the city at some point. New and proposed, existing footprints in the upper left, this is first floor. You can kind of see that, the jut out of the illustration to the right. Our goal was to create 90% of the interaction in this building in day-to-day to happen immediately within 20 steps. So that addition has all the frontline counters. You come in the door, and boom, you're right there. This footprint also took the main existing square footage, and we were able to cut the existing square footage, the circulation square footage, down 55%. So we took it from 2,100 square feet down to 1,100 square feet. The important piece to take out of that is the 1,100, the additional 1,100 was able to go into usable square footage. So square footage, we didn't have to add on to the building. Just to highlight, the orange is all these public spaces that we're talking about also. So council chambers is the orange on the left with breakout rooms, closed session rooms. The upper right is a multipurpose room, which was heavily in need. That would be large bid openings, large interviews, training, city would all be on that first floor. Second floor, upper left again, but you can, in the bottom right, you can kind of see that gray circle. That's the circulation. We were able to tighten up the circumference of that. All these plans also have introduced, the exterior facade primarily have all the workstations, where all the natural daylighting will flood through and go to the internal office spaces. So a good majority of the spaces in the larger divisions and departments have that where if I am in an internal office, I have glass windows looking through to the outside, but I don't have that direct access to outside. Just a concept that feedback from other staff members and other municipalities, you're in this building a long time during the day. So everybody to experience that natural light is an important factor. Third floor, same type of concept. I should note that we met with the departments and divisions twice to review their, they have not seen these plans. So you're seeing them at the same time they're kind of seeing them. But we're very confident in the future spaces that we created. The adjacencies are there, that the square footage that we're representing as the whole that's needed is the correct number. As I see James critiquing his space. No, sorry. Here's the fourth floor. You can kind of see the fourth floor. Now the council chambers moved down, so it freed up space to move other divisions and departments. So it really opened up the area. The other large piece on the fourth floor, we took advantage of, is the mechanical space. If you've been in the mechanical room, take it, enjoy it, go in there. The equipment is old. It's from, all that would be removed, encapsulated back into actual functional usable space. And that mechanical would go on, new mechanicals would go on the roof, except distribution of electrical, things like that, but primarily on the roof. Option 2, City Center. I can tell you, it's a fabulous building. It's on a 30-by-30 grid. The challenge we were having here, so we use the same square footage. We had about 59,000 square feet that was needed. I rounded it up to 60 because of the grid layout of this facility. This facility would only be on a Level 1 and a Level 2, which made it a little tricky. So the blue squares you're seeing there are light wells that we introduced into the building to kind of give it apples-to-apples of exterior facade and windows that this building would have, or a building of similar circumference area. So the red is the proposed square footage of the first floor. The upper half of that red is a single-story building. And then the bottom image is the second floor, second level. On this plan, the left side would be the, on the 75, the 15,000 square feet needed for Oshkosh Media and Maintenance Facilities Department. Because if this, this Option 2 goes, this facility goes away, so does the building to the outside. So we have to recapture that 15,000 square feet. So that gives us a total of the 75,000 square feet that you'll see in the price tag. Option 3 goes back to a four-story building, primarily for reasons I said earlier, to encapsulate the maximum exterior lineal footage of exterior daylighting. If it would go to a two-story building, then the 17-acre site would just have to increase. So this is a 17-acre site with 200, 200-spot parking stalls. And then the blue is just representing, obviously, stormwater management would have to be included. The cost sheets pretty much highlight all the square footages that we see, from remodel square footage, to addition square footage, to Oshkosh Media remodeling square footage. Just to highlight in some areas, like the City Hall, Option 1 does not have purchasing of new land because we're staying here, nor does it have selling of this building because we're staying here. So some of the areas to look at that way. Option 2 price tag, that option there, as I mentioned, the introduction of the light wells is a different line item in the upper second, upper half of the building-related items. And then also the exterior facade upgrades, so introducing more exterior windows over there, but also creating more of a civic entrance on that single-story part of the north, plan north of the building. This cost also has to, we need to address parking somewhere over there. We need to put 200 parking stalls. So there's line items in there for the parking, how we address parking. That's a logistics thing based on the parking structure, how we get the city to have 200 parking stalls in addition to the slab-on-grade parking stalls. In addition to the parking stalls, maintenance that's required on the parking structure, 10, 15, 20 years down the line, there's a line item in there for that. Option 4, or I'm sorry, Option 3, pretty much all the same items, but there again, this one, you would have the Oshkosh Media built into it again. You would have the purchase of the land. You would have the sale of the City Hall. Option 3 also has the sale of the City Hall in it. A quick rundown, you can kind of see the different square footages and the costs associated. So you're talking anywhere from the $30 million to the $37 million, depending on the option. These are all open for discussion items to make sure we're all understanding where numbers are coming from, how they're, how we receive the numbers. But to us, they're current market day numbers on square footages of remodel to additions. And then there's also a inflation factor built in there to take it to 2027. All the why items haven't been addressed in every 1, 2, and 3 option. Each one carries a little bit of a different price tag potentially. As I, as I said earlier, the light wells in Option 2 aren't in Option 1 or in Option 3 because it's not an existing footprint that would require that. So each option has different questions, and we're here to really to help you understand. End of the day, we're at about 46,000, 46,000 square feet, and we need to get to 60,000 square feet plus the 15,000 for Oshkosh Media and Maintenance Facility. Those numbers, we are very comfortable are the accurate numbers. The plans we presented for City Hall, are workable plans. Are they vetted out by the departments and divisions? No. But all the square footages they asked for and the specialty rooms we've asked for, between server rooms to conference rooms to storage rooms to file rooms, are in that plan.
I'm guessing you're going to have some questions.
Questions, yep.
All right. Councilmember Flohm got in first.
All right. So a couple of questions that I have on this. In terms of this building, what are the concerns that I have with this building overall? Is that while the plan that you presented, which was very well thought out, and I appreciate it, makes sense for today, does it make sense 20 years from now? And that's the concern I have with staying at this site. And the worry is more, it's like, okay, yes, this may cost less now, but are we going to have to spend more in the future to make additional improvements? That's something that I do worry about. A new site, while today may look more expensive, and I would, you know, want to double-check the, the price options for City Center specifically. I do think they are a little high. But moving forward, I would rather invest more now so we don't have to invest more later instead of a Band-Aid option. So I understand that, you know, Option 1 is not necessarily what would be called a Band-Aid option. But my question is, are we just walking this along so that we're going to be back here and having this conversation again in 10 years?
Yes. Great question. So I apologize, I didn't answer it in the presentation. When we look at this building to remodel, we are taking it down to the concrete structure. There's nothing saved in this building except the concrete structure. All new windows, all new mechanical, all new electrical, all new flooring, all new, you're 100% down to poured concrete. If you look at data on old buildings like this, thermally, because of the natural mass, you're actually money ahead already with that. But our goal is from a brand-new build to this build of City Hall, down to the structure like we're talking, are apples for apples.
Do you also plan on doing, and if this wasn't in your contract, I apologize, do you also plan on doing a needs assessment for each department and what they're looking for in terms of space requirements for the ones that are in this building?
Oh, yeah, we did that already. So your document has that for every division and every department in this building. Is that what you're saying that the groups are?
Yes.
Yeah, we have analyzed that. And in your packet that you have there, you'll see every group, every staff position listed, and also line items, how many future, and how that future per individual gets, whether it's a cubicle, a hard office, number one, number two, how many future conference rooms. That's all on that massive spreadsheet of you when you have time to take a look at.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thanks. I just have a couple of questions. So what I'm hearing is that we need 75,000 square feet for long-term planning. Is that right? 15,000 for Oshkosh Media, 60,000 for the operation of the city?
Correct. Yep.
And I understand that we think we can get that in this building with the outbuildings. We know that we can get that if we build a new building because we get to decide everything. For City Center, is that 75,000 square feet, or is it more, or is it less?
The City Center would be the same.
So it just happens that this building can fit the same amount of space as City Center? Or is there unused space in City Center, I guess is my question?
Oh, yeah. If you look at the slide of the City Center, the red is just what we were saying will allocate for City Hall. The orange is leftover square footage City Hall does not need.
Got it. And so that extra space, potentially, we could use it for other synergies for the city. We could bring in museum storage, for example. We could bring in public exhibits. We could use it for something else. And that would be included in that price tag. Is that right? Or are you excluding?
No, that's excluded from the price tag. The only thing in the price, price tag is the red.
Including the purchase price? Or would it just?
The purchase price is in the cost sheet that I presented.
I guess maybe let me ask it a different way. When we buy City Center, if we were to buy City Center, are we also buying the unused space? Or you're saying that we're going to discount it, discount the price because we're not buying that space?
You are not buying the orange section of the City Center.
Okay.
Yep. I kept them apples for apples. So square footage-wise, they're all the same square footage because we did what you needed for 25, 30 years out. So the orange on that layout is not included in the City Center price tag.
Okay. But potentially, when we're talking to the developer, just because this is, it's a different, it's very different than the first and third options. Potentially, when we're talking to the developer, we could buy the whole thing, and we just wouldn't use that portion of the space for the City Hall purposes.
100%, correct.
That's possible, right?
Yep, 100%.
I guess that's where I'm going. And maybe that addresses some of Jacob's concerns for, for future growth, but also we could use for other things. The second question I have about Option 3, I know we mentioned, I think you mentioned it was 17 acres is what we would need. And we would try to locate that close to City, the City Center. Have we identified land that's that large, where we would want it to be, like where it would be accessible to the public, but also in our kind of central business area?
No.
Okay. I think that's a challenge for that Option 3.
Yep, 100%.
And so I just want to call that out for everybody, that that's, I don't know that that's completely viable in my mind, because 17 acres is a lot of land. And then I guess my last question is, the reason that City Center on its face is appealing to me, and that's why I'll just show all my cards right now, is that we would be moving City Hall from a place that is near downtown to downtown. I think that there is value there. I think it would help businesses in the area. Have you done any research, or are there any callouts for what the community impact would be versus in keeping the City Hall here versus moving it downtown to City Center?
No. What I would focus back on is, I think our goal with this assessment is first of all, to see if a new City Hall is needed.
Sure.
And then we can dive in deeper exactly by scoring where the best location is.
And so what I'm hearing, though, is it's a resounding yes, a new City Hall is needed, or refurbished City Hall.
My opinion, yes.
Based on space.
But yeah, yep.
Okay. And, and also, just to make sure that I'm understanding it, we're looking at a 1, 2, $3 million difference in the actual price tag of these three options, right? So we're not, we're talking about $30 million of cost to do this. We're talking about a couple million dollars in difference in actual price tags.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep, that's correct. Besides build new.
If I could ask a question to follow up, because these are great questions. The, one of the things, John, we talked about was with Option 2, there's a little more uncertainty with that. So the numbers could be, you know, it might be on the low end for that number and a high end for the City Hall. So in, in full disclosure, that is a little up in the air. Plus, you know, we've got a, a facility cost, and it's, you know, based on the tax rules. So we put a range in there. That doesn't mean that we've discussed that. Anytime you put a land cost on one of these things in a public forum, it's like, oh, that's the number. Not necessarily. So I just wanted to point that out. And anything else you wanted to add, John?
Yeah. We were given a wide range of cost per square foot, and we kind of used that in there. The, the thought behind that is we kind of used it, because if it goes up, it just makes the options that much more lopsided. So.
Yeah. And I guess to that point, though, also, I saw that there was a, it was a 1 to 2 million dollar line item for the sale of this building. That, that's a similar analogy, right? So there was a wide range there, and it could be more than $2 million for the sale of this building, which would cut down actually the total cost of Options 2 or 3. Is that, is that right?
Yeah. Historically, what we've looked at on that is a lot of times, we spend money, we don't get money to get rid of a building like this.
Sure.
It actually goes into a different, you know, so we hesitated on that even, because a lot of times that number isn't even the number we listed. It could be zero.
Sure. And to that point, though, assuming that we would repurpose this building to something like housing, it might have value that's in excess of just the dollar value going towards City Hall, right?
Well, it'd be, yeah. And it helps, you know, it's taxes one way, taxes the other way.
Yeah. And I'm not challenging you, of course.
No, I understand.
I'm just trying to convey that there are lots of factors going into, rather than just a $30 million price tag. That's kind of my goal.
Yep.
It would be easy to just go to the last page and say, oh, it's very obvious.
Right.
It's not obvious. And that's, there's caveats, and you're, you're pointing them out. And they're, they're all legitimate.
Cool. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Stevenson.
This is super helpful. I really liked the breakdown. I really liked the, the designs but together. Looking at the parking cost per Option 2, is that to create 200 stalls? And is that?
No, that's to purchase 200 stalls.
Okay.
Yep.
From the existing parking lot, or do we have to build that somewhere?
That would be from the existing structure.
Okay.
Yep.
That was my question.
All right. I'm going to go next.
Excuse me, I should back up. There's like, I think we call it like 45, there's certain ones on grade, but those would be primarily for visitors, and the others would be for staff and vehicles, city vehicles in the structure.
Sure.
Sorry. Councilmember Nichols hit most of my questions, but I really wanted to touch base on the swimming pool that we are above right now in our, in our parking lot. And will that affect, because obviously that can't leave, that, that's going to be permanent, will that affect our ability to repurpose this building or sell it, or?
It, well, as you saw from, from John's drawings, it wouldn't affect how to repurpose this building. In fact, we pushed it out, what, about 2,500 feet? So we got out, how far did we get to?
Oh, you're, you're a good distance away from the parking structure. Any redevelopment to this would need that stormwater. And James, I mean, so to me, it's site-related. It just helps the site actually be more usable for parking.
Yeah, that underground facility is a regional, not necessarily for the site. That's why the existing parking lot has several biofilters for managing the site runoff.
Yeah. So that, the, the structure, if you've been here less than 10 years, there is a stormwater retention pond beneath the parking lot of City Hall. Took over a year to build. So that would remain there, and that would be, we'd probably need to maintain that as almost a public parking lot, so that we maintained it for, for maintenance purposes. We don't have to do maintenance often, but that would be required. And selling it and then going after our easement rights would probably be overly difficult. I would recommend I would recommend if we were to, whatever we would do, we would maintain the ownership of that, that parking lot, so that we maintain the ownership of the structure.
Yeah. P-101, there's a red kind of hash area, that will give you the outline of that underground detention area.
Okay. Councilmember Paul?
Thank you, and I guess this is more for city staff instead of, instead of the architect here, would be like for next steps. So in terms of engaging the public on this, I think it's important that we get some form of opinion about what the public is looking for in the City Hall. ADA accessibility is a big point for me, but then further refining these proposals, and then looking at what to give the council next, is something that I would be interested in, I, I don't speak for all the council, obviously, but moving forward from here and making sure that this is not a dead document, something needs to be done, it needs to be done rather quickly. So if we can kind of get a move on on refining these plans, and what these look like, and we can probably try to narrow down the cost, and trying to identify, because we're going to have to make the expenditure soon and put it into the CIP at some point, when that needs to happen, and making sure that the public is engaged on this, and having some form of public interaction.
Part of the reason we brought this back was the council had requested that we take a look at these three different options, and I think that there was concern about sticker shock with the number, and I admitted that the number of 30 million was really just some estimates based on the numbers that we did seven years ago. We had done a similar study seven years ago, but it needed to be refreshed, so Mr. Wallencamp went through and, you know, interviewed the departments to confirm that the square footages were, you know, up to date and everything. So the idea is, is our number adequate for the budget? It depends, I mean, it's, but if you're looking at delaying it until, say, 2027, then you're upwards of, over that $30 million. If you did it earlier, it'd be less, so, and I think that's what, what you were trying to say is, you know, every year you delay it, you're going to add an inflation factor. So, you know, in terms of what the council would want to talk to the public about, that would, you know, we could certainly, you know, gain public input. My honest opinion is that they're going to be looking very much at the price tag, because that's obviously what means the most to them. I don't think they're necessarily, we'll follow ADA requirements because that's what we're required to do, so that stuff we would just naturally do. You know, do people think that the council chambers is too big, too small? Well, that's where we rely on the professionalism of the architect to say, this is your standard council chambers for a community this size, this is standard office size, there's, there's nothing elaborate or anything in that regard. So it would really be more about how do you want to gain public input so you can make the tough decision. Part of this was, we're working on a facility plan that we're planning to give you, John, or, but I'm going to put you on the spot, like May?
April.
April, May is the idea, but we moved this up, accelerated this, so you have this to start working with. You don't have to make a final decision, but now you know the numbers, and now you can, you can, you know, you, you have every right to tip your hand about what your preferences are, because ultimately, you've got to live with the decision. If, if you spend 30-plus million dollars, you got to be able to defend it, you got to be comfortable with the decision you make. So do we budget for it? When do we budget for it? You know, if, if you're, if you're hesitant, tell us you're hesitant, because there's no sense in budgeting it for '25, '26, when you're saying, I want to listen a little more. You may delay it a year just to, to buy time. I'm not suggesting that, I think staff would say, we've been waiting on this a long time, we would ask you to, to consider this, because we are getting tight. We are really getting tight for, especially with respect to meeting space. We're, we're, we are really at the end of our rope in terms of getting good space for, for us to have public meetings and things like that.
And I'm very appreciative that we had this conversation today. I know this was pulled from the CIP so that we could have this kind of conversation, and I want to thank the architect for coming. I know that we are going to have to make a decision at some point in the future, and rather soon. I, for the record, am partial to City Center, just for future proofing and for that space, but again, this is why we had that conversation today, and we'll go forward from here, so I appreciate it.
And I think also what I heard from you is you don't want to do this again in seven years and be in the same spot. Councilmember Ressler.
Thank you. Sir, just kind of wondering, you have the 2027 numbers, can you explain how you arrived at those? And, you know, one thing I think we find in a lot of things that we put a lot of time, effort, and money into is we come up with what we believe something's going to cost, and then as we start, and we're, start getting involved with it. I, I remember when I built my house, it was supposed to be X amount of dollars, and by the time it got done, it was X plus, whatever. So, you know, how did you arrive at these numbers? Is there some type of, I don't know, 10%, contingency, based on factors that we just don't know, or we're looking into a crystal ball? Or, you know, how, how did you analyze these numbers?
Great question. I want to make sure everyone understands, the numbers that are here are project numbers, so it's all-inclusive. It's not building numbers, because some of that might get a challenge for you, and you want to understand that, because someone will say, well, I just built our new City Hall for $230 a square foot. They're giving you the building square footage. So the bottom dollar line is the project. The columns, the high and low, so you've got three really columns there that have numbers in it. The high and low really much just takes out the flex of next year's dollar values where we're at. And these are historical dollars from facilities that we've been involved with, also double-checking other municipalities that have done work similar to these buildings, and dialing in those numbers per square foot. The 2027 one is got the 6% inflation factor on it because it's multiple years. So it's taking that high and low number to that contingency, you'll actually see there's two lines for contingency in there. There's a design contingency and a construction contingency. The design contingency is because you're, we're, we're at 10,000 feet right now, we're very high level, so there's, things might change up or down, so that contingency number, you know, you're carrying on the one option, 2.2 to 2.6, just on contingency for design, that's why. Construction contingency exactly is what that is, is when you get into construction, and there's unforeseen things, or you add, that's the contingency. So eventually, that design contingency goes away. But to answer your question, it's historical data, it's us costing each area by square footage, and also breaking it out by divisions of construction.
Okay, maybe one last question. I'm assuming you've done many, many of these types of projects over your years. Historically speaking, do you know when you've given someone, like you've given us estimates here, and the other projects that you've given estimates for, how close were you? Maybe it's a little unfair, because the client wanted to do more than what you had in there, so it costs more, but, you know, a percentage of what you've estimated, how, over that, under that, and by what percent?
Yeah. We're, we're proud to say 90-plus, we're on target with the cost estimate. Early in my career, we inherited so many projects that had a building cost that didn't have a project cost, and all of a sudden, every, every time you're over budget, well, you really aren't, you just had bad information. My goal is to make sure you have the right information, because I know, once a number is talked about, it's the number that's there. There's no advantage for me to sit here today and tell you it's $30 million when it's 35. I'm very confident in these numbers, in our track record, I'm doing these facilities, we do hundreds of thousands of square feet a year just of this planning. So that's, hopefully that helps.
It does, thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, Councilmember Nichols.
And sorry to go again, I guess, as I'm, as I'm hearing all the other questions, and I'm hearing you all talk, and I'm hearing that our next step is to really determine not only what option we want, but when the option is, and how do we budget for it, and how do we communicate to the city. Really, I guess my question is, your, your planning and your budgeting and your options come from a place of, there are a lot of assumptions about growth, there are a lot of assumptions about dollars, but it's also assuming that the structure of city departments remains static? Is that right? So everything is built the way it is today, and then it grows over time? Do I have that right?
Yep.
I think what might be helpful for me, and this isn't a question for you, but maybe it's for council, and maybe it's a bigger conversation, but on the private side, we go through, we have management consultants that we hire frequently, just to determine if the structure of our business and the structure of our leadership makes sense for the way our business has changed, and we're in a customer service-focused business, in my job, a city is obviously a customer service-focused business, if you think of it like a business. I wonder if, before we actually determine what the correct option is, just to make sure that we're building it for future, we're building it for today as well, if we start looking, especially if we have a new city manager coming in, if we actually go the step of, of hiring a management consultant to come in and say, these are how our departments are structured today, this is how we communicate with citizens today, this is how we take feedback today, and maybe we could do it better in terms of structure and process. I know we've talked about auditing our, our process a little bit with how we communicate to people, but I wonder if that would be a natural next step before we spend $30 million on building a building that just allows us to have what we have today, when really we could look at a management consultant that would say, that, your structure's wrong, so the building might need to look a little bit different.
What, just going through it, all the years, I'd, I'd recommend that you have each division and department do a presentation to you, the council, on their staffing and on their levels. You don't have big departments. No, no, I'm just saying, so I think that's a, I, I would recommend starting with that before you start with a large fee of a management consultant, because you can save one person, two, you get what I'm saying, the, the dollars and the square footages might just not add up, but it might help the story of why you're doing it.
And I'm glad you brought it up that way, because I think when you, people think about management consultants, they think, oh my gosh, you're trying to reduce headcount, and that's not at all what my goal would be. My goal would be to make sure, maybe we don't have enough people.
Yep.
Maybe our departments are not communicating the way that they could. Maybe we need people to actually sit in the same building, rather than the different buildings that they're in right now. That would be my goal in hiring a management consultant, because, to your point, I could listen to all the departments, tell me what their staffing is, that's not my expertise.
Yeah.
I would love to have someone come in and say, wait a minute, other cities are doing it this different way, driving efficiency, the customer service is better, and citizen response to working with the city is also better. That'd be my goal.
Yep.
All right. I'm just going to close with, you know, other members have talked about their, their preferences. I think option three for me is not really attainable. I don't see that land being available in a spot that's going to be conducive to city business, and I worry that option one continues to put a square peg into a round hole, and I have every confidence that this will get renovated in a way that it would work way better than it is now, and we wouldn't have to have signs on our first floor that say ADA bathroom on the fourth floor, and the elevator's out. So I have confidence that option one would solve the immediate problems, but to me, option two, I think with the City Center, gives us almost a blank canvas to make sure that the square peg is in a square hole right away. And so I, I've heard a couple other people say that, I'm not going to speak for the council, just like I know Mayor Moogarhour wouldn't, but I, I would really like to hear more about that, and, and what could be done there, and move from there. But, thank you for going.
I guess for clarifying options, I don't have a preference right now. I want to digest this, you threw a lot of information at us, a lot of good stuff, so I guess I would agree that option three, I think, is a little bit off the table, but the other two I'd like to look into a little bit more, so.
Yeah, and really, the goal is if the next workshop, if we need to be present, we're here to keep feeding information to you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
All right, next up on the agenda is citizen statements to council, so this would be things that are not on the agenda. I do have one person who registered to speak. Amber, did you want to talk about an agenda item, or something that's not on the agenda today? Okay, then come on up. Up, right over here, if you would, please. You get your own special mic.
Never done this before. Kind of short, too. My name is Amber Justland. I am both the lead pastor of Revival Street Church. I'm an RN, and I'm also an area business owner in Ashgosh, and I want to thank you all for just listening to me today. This is really awesome, and I know you all care about the community just as much as I do, so I appreciate that. And Carl, I recognize your face from the food pantry, so thanks for stepping up and being our deputy mayor. Okay, so I want to talk about house keys, not handcuffs, today. So back in May, my husband and I started a homeless ministry where we do church every week with the homeless in the park downtown by the sun dial. We reach out to them for their physical needs, but also their spiritual needs, we do a lot of food delivery to them in the community. But the biggest thing that we've seen lately is criminalization of homelessness in Ashgosh, and I don't know if you guys are aware of this or not, but many homeless people are getting fined for everyday things, are getting kicked out of places where they are allowed to belong, places like the public library during the day. I spent an hour yesterday consulting a homeless man who was given a $295 fine, and he had to decide whether he was going to not pay it and go to jail, or pay it and not eat. That's not right. And so that's why I wanted to come and talk today. I'm sorry I'm crying, but it's near and dear to my heart, these are real people with real issues, many of them are displaced because their rent has doubled, or they have lost their job, or they were in the hospital for several months, and they have nowhere to go. They're sleeping on the ground, mostly by Salvation Army, there are many who are housed at the homeless shelter, but there are about 30 to 40 people I know personally who are not housed right now, and they are not allowed to sleep in public places that are warm and comfortable. The police are now kicking out, and I love the police, not against them, by any means, we are on the same team, but they're kicking people out of the downtown park, which is the most controversial place to, and the most safe place to sleep, because it's lit up. People are less likely to bother them, less likely to harm them, but they're not allowed to sleep there. The only place that I know that they're publicly allowed to sleep right now is by the Salvation Army in the back parking lot, and that is the only place on the hard ground. I don't know if you've ever been camping, but sleeping on the hard ground is not good. They might get two to three hours of sleep a night. We expect them to be part of normal society and to be able to function, and to be able to get a job, and to find housing, they need proper sleep. This needs to be taken care of, that's why I'm here. I don't know what to do. I know what to do for them spiritually, I know how to meet their, their needs, but I can't house 40 people in my basement. It's not going to work. So we, as a community, need to step up, we need somewhere for emergency housing for these people. There's no reason that the homeless shelter should turn anyone away. They can put mats on the floor, they don't need a giant bed. The old day-by-day shelter had a lot of space, I don't know why we're not still utilizing that and having volunteers come and help with that, but that is something we could easily do. As far as meeting the needs of people going to the bathroom, if area businesses don't want to allow people in to use their bathrooms, we could put a porta potty outside. That's something easy we could do down by the sun dial. And I understand, as an area business owner myself, that I run a six-figure business, that, that might influence people coming to their businesses, we need to be proactive in our community on loving on the homeless, and having community outreach that allows people to understand these people aren't here to harm you or hurt you, they need a hand up. They don't need to be criminalized for being just living. You can put yourself in their shoes for just a moment, and imagine what it would be like not knowing where your next meal comes from, not knowing where you're going to sleep tonight, and wondering if your fingers and toes are going to freeze off tonight. That is a huge deal. One of the homeless people who's very mentally ill, and she can't follow normal human rules, she's been living in the park for many years. Luckily, the police leave her alone because they know that she's truly homeless and can't yell. She lost all of her toes last year. Everybody's going, watch, lucky she can still walk. I'm in tears because I don't know what to do about this, I'm presenting it to you because you're very smart, I listen to all of you, and I'm like, wow, they could come up with solutions that I can't. So putting this in your hands, and one of the things I want to remind you is, what And one of the things I want to remind you is what we do unto the homeless, we do unto Jesus. He was homeless. I was recently in Ireland, and there is a sculpture of Jesus on a bench, and he's homeless. Why would we kick Jesus out of the park? Why would we refuse to help him? Think about that for a moment. So I want you to put yourself in their shoes and imagine what it's like. And I myself, and you might wonder, what have I done to help them besides minister to them? In 2020, I took a meth and heroin addict into my home, and we rehabilitated him, and we took him to church three times a week, and he got baptized, and he became mighty man of God. And this year, he is about to graduate from ADOA Counseling School, and he's going to have a normal and a real life. But that took time and dedication and love, and we need to do that in our own community. It can't just be one person doing that, we need to do that as a whole. So I don't know what exactly to propose besides not criminalizing things and offering more housing, but I'm sure that you're going to have thoughts and dreams and different things that the Holy Spirit's going to put on your heart, because we've been praying for that. You might have already had ideas before you even got here. Listen, listen to the Holy Spirit. God is speaking to you whether you know it or not, it doesn't matter if you believe, He will speak to you. Listen. Do what's right, do what's in your heart. Please help. Don't harm or criminalize the homeless. Thank you.
At this time, I don't have anybody else registered to speak. Would anybody like to speak at this time, or we'll move on to our consent agenda? All right. Seeing none, next up is consent agenda. I need a motion and a second.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Would city clerk, please take the roll on the consent agenda, please.
Flohm.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Carried six.
Thank you. Next on to new ordinances, we only have one, it is ordinance 24-560. Approve zone change from Heavy Industrial District to Heavy Industrial District with a planned development overlay at 2875 Atlas Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Need a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Flohm.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
This was a new one? Did you want to lay the rules on vote on it in the first?
It has no asterisk.
Has no asterisk.
Mm-hmm.
No asterisk.
My mistake.
It's, oh, it's a new ordinance, yep.
Yeah, I'm used to seeing the asterisks there.
Yep, I see that.
Yep, okay. So we'll need to rescind that. Motion and second first.
Do a first reading?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have to move to invalidate the vote or something?
Yeah, we would have to.
Could we move to invalidate the vote that we just took? Second.
Let me do a previous question. Can we do a motion to reconsider?
You could do a motion to rescind it.
Okay.
Forty.
I move to rescind the vote on ordinance 24-560.
I'll second whoever. Yeah. And then we have to all vote on rescinding it?
Rescinding.
Rescinding that?
Yeah.
Okay. Flohm.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Carried six.
We'll just put it on next agenda.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So consider that the first reading.
Sorry, I did not catch.
No worries.
Throw me off.
Matt's never going to leave again. New resolutions, where we will have action tonight. Resolution 24-561, amend capital improvement program to include Lake Shore Drive reimagination in 2027. Need a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Figured that was going to happen. All right, first up is Councilman Nichols.
Thank you. So at Plan Commission, we had a workshop related to the Clearwells project on last Tuesday, and there was a lot of conversation about landscaping of that property, landscaping of the park-owned property across the street between the Clearwells, what were the, the new Clearwells will be, the water treatment plant site and the lake, and then also across Merritt and Menominee Park. The next thing on the agenda is to talk about a landscape architect for all of that, but before we get there, this is a CIP amendment related to funding of some of that landscape development and reimagination, and I don't know, James or Mark, if you'd be willing to speak to kind of why the workshop happened and kind of where the project went and why we're doing this today.
Yeah, the workshop with Plan Commission last week was really to talk about the architectural features on the storage tanks in the pump house. As you mentioned, there was a lot of discussion about landscaping on the site versus in, you know, the Lake Shore Drive area and the park across the street. You know, as council may recall, from the direction that was given to staff late last year was to retain a landscape architect to help with the reimagination of Lake Shore Drive, because engineers are good at drawing lines and not creating pretty pictures. I will admit that. You know, so that is, you know, a big part of the direction that we were given, and I think as we talked about it at Plan Commission last week, we wanted to make sure that as an organization, we were showing the commitment to implementing what will ultimately be recommended as a part of the next resolution, but we wanted to show that commitment to implementing that project. It is not currently listed in the capital improvement program plan, so this is to amend the plan to include it in 2027. Obviously, funding of that would not be a part of any budget resolution until, you know, late 2026, as we're talking about the budget for the next year, but this is to organizationally show that we are absolutely committed to implementing this project that we're going to be working on the design of as a part of the next resolution.
Thank you. And as part of that conversation, something that I mentioned at Plan Commission, so whether you're Democrat or Republican or an Independent or none of those things, there's a natural distrust with government. Something that the citizens of Oshkosh, I do truly believe trust us with, is that they're going to turn on their taps and they're going to get water and they're going to be able to drink it. And so I think that this is a lot about our engineering department, but to James's point, engineers are not artists. Otherwise, you would be an artist and not an engineer, probably. But with that, I know there was a lot of citizen involvement, there was an ad hoc committee that was created to talk about how the building is going to look, how landscaping is going to look. And the reality is that the water treatment site is a limited amount of space for landscaping. The land where there's going to actually be beautification is actually parkland at a lot of places, which is why we're hiring the landscape architect. So I'm glad that we are going to designate $2.5 million to fund that project two years from now. I'm glad that we're going to be able to move forward, actually ensuring that we have compliant Clearwells. There was an issue with the state, and they said that we have to change the Clearwells, that's kind of how we got here, but that we're going to be in a place where we continue to have clean water when we turn on our taps, that's a really good thing, but also that our front porch of Oshkosh on the lake shore is going to still look beautiful. So I'm glad we're doing this, and I'll support it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Flohm.
I'm going to second what Councilmember Nichols said. This is something that I am excited about in terms of clean water. One of the quick questions that I have, though, is just making sure, I know there was an ad hoc committee that approved and recommended a landscape architect, but when it comes down to what the landscape architect actually comes back with, is there going to be the opportunity for at least the neighborhood association and the relevant stakeholders to have a chance to look at it before council considers it?
Yeah, we have built in a number of presentations, be it workshops and public information meetings, whether that be, you know, a true public information meeting, several board and commission meetings. You know, obviously with this being partially parkland, you know, advisory park board will be a big part of those conversations. So we have built into the scope of services for the landscape architect numerous workshops and meetings for public involvement and engagement, as well as providing workshop information to you as a council.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Larson.
I'm going to echo all the same. I'm very grateful that PC came up with a solution. I think it was great. DJ, thanks for working on it. James, thank you also. I went back and watched the September 23 meeting where this was discussed last with council, and there was lots of consensus about the building should look pretty, and there was lots of consensus about, we don't like the drawings we got so far, you can, you've talked about it, because they weren't done yet, right? So the, whether there was actual consensus, given that the landscaping needed to be done with the project or otherwise, I understand that it may not be possible anyway, there was lots of consensus the last time this came up at council that they wanted to see that, and we do too. So I think this is a great way to move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevenson.
I pressed my button before I knew everybody was going to say everything I wanted to say, so. I think I was quoted in the Herald as saying, "Too engineery." So I think that's where we kind of landed with this, is we wanted to get a landscape architect in there, and no discredit engineers, you guys do a great job, but we wanted some kind of more artsy folks on cue to do this one. I also want to thank your department and DJ for kind of working on this one, and I do think it shows commitment for us doing this in the future, and I think that's what everybody's worry is, is that we're not going to commit to this, we're going to get a Clearwell project done and then not do the park space, but I think this shows that we are committed to both projects. I certainly don't want to slow down the Clearwells projects. We need clean water, we need, have a significant amount of money kind of socked away to try to pay for this thing, so I know these projects, while hopefully are done in semi-tandem, can, they can break a little bit if they need to. I think Clearwells is the more important, more mazles high rate of needs, right? It's the, water is a basic necessity.
Yeah, and I think one of the things you just said, Councilmember Stevenson, is important. These are two different projects, you know, the zoning approvals for the Clearwell and the Water Filtration Plant Site, those are limited to the perimeter, you know, of the actual parcel. A lot of this work for the reimagination of Lake Shore Drive and the rest of the beautification with Park, and that's outside of, you know, the actual Water Filtration Plant Site, so it, you know, it cannot be a part of the zoning approvals because they have to be looked at separately. You know, this, you know, the construction project for building the new Clearwells and Pump Station, that is about a three-year construction process. We can only take about half of the system down at a time, build the first half, spend some time operating it to make sure it works the way it's supposed to, and then we can start building the second half. I also think it's important to note that, you know, we've talked about it a little bit, but the Lake Shore Drive will be closed during the entirety of that construction project. The contractor needs that area for staging of equipment and materials and parking of their staff. As we've talked with Planning Services on our submittals, they've recommended to us, and it's something you'll see at a future council meeting, of, you know, expanding that staging and storage into what is the little bit of parkland between Lake Shore Drive and Lake Winnebago, because the right of way is just not wide enough to accommodate everything that's going to be needed during construction.
Yeah, no, great points. Thank you.
Excellent. The only thing I didn't hear yet, and I didn't go back and watch it because I remember I was up here, and we talked about making sure that we had some input from our indigenous and tribal people that are, you know, the first inhabitants of this area. Have you had any luck reaching out to have any artwork, have some of the, you know, working with this professional designer, to make sure that we are honoring that as well?
If I could ask Museum Director Canizo to come up and help me with that. Certainly, as soon as we received the direction from council last year, we reached out to then Director Phillips, and since Anna has taken over, we've worked with Anna and the museum's graphic artist, Daniel Pfizer, on how to incorporate that aspect of it, and Anna's got some amazing insights and given us some great thoughts on where it is appropriate and maybe not appropriate to do that.
Even the engineers realize they're not artsy. It's a self-awareness thing.
Honestly, I'm not artsy either. I'm more sciency. I'm archaeology, that one, my sister's the artsy one, but, so yeah, we were contacted to provide some input about this very subject matter, and when it comes to what we thought would be good themes to present on the exterior of the facade of the building, we wanted to keep it where it was something timeless, where it would honor the indigenous past, no matter the time and space, and so really focusing on the natural features. Sturgeon were important to all peoples, no matter if it was shortly after the Ice Age, up to present day, they're all very important. Wild rice, the same thing. So it didn't focus specifically on a specific culture, but really something that expanded time and space for all the indigenous cultures that occupied since the beginning, the Menominee, their ancestors, as well as the Ho-Chunk, but also the groups that came in. Stockbridge, Muncie Mohican, Oneida, all these communities that came and went, you know, the subject matter was important. So we focused on keeping it on the natural resources. When it came to focusing on some of the input of it, we thought it was best, since the museum has recently expanded its scope and mission to include public art, we have that merged board now, the Museum Arts and Culture Board, excuse me, the Museum Arts and Culture Board, so now we have the oversight of public art. So that includes acquisition, deaccession, maintenance, care, all the things that go on with cultural heritage management. We gave some advice, because this board, the Museum Arts and Culture Board, really serves in an advisory capacity for council, for our colleagues, for the city manager, to provide advice on what direction to go in. I provided the advice not to put original commissioned artwork on the exterior of a building that is deemed critical infrastructure, because we'll have competing for a variety of reasons. Let me put on my cultural preservation cap. I look at it that we'll have competing, competing priorities for care when it comes to that. So if we have an original commission of indigenous art on the exterior of the building, and it cracks, it needs repair, it needs to be restored, I would bring in a conservator to do that, not a facilities maintenance to just patch a hole or to clean it up. So from a stewardship perspective, putting it on a piece of critical infrastructure, I think, is the wrong canvas for it. I think it's an excellent idea to engage with the indigenous community and do some sort of original commission. I think that on the building, it's the wrong spot for it. I think to incorporate it into the, the.
The information education component of the reimagination.
Yeah, thanks, James. See, see how we collaborate together? And part of that educational component could be an original commission piece of artwork. I've spoke with members of the Menominee Nation about having their input for our own exhibits at the museum, but also just engaging with them to ensure that their voice is part of the curatorial and interpretation of what we do. So I had consulted with the Smithsonian on an exhibition on waterways, just for example, and part of that was the exploration of water, not just from a scientific perspective, but also from a cultural perspective. So there's opportunity to engage that cultural voice in the interpretation of that educational component, but I also think it's a unique opportunity to also have a commissioned piece as part of that component. So, and I'll put on my curatorial hat, so the community can engage with it. On the facade, it's hard to really present interpretation to go along with it, where the community can engage with it and they can really see it. I think treated in a holistic installation way as part of this educational component would be a great way to engage the indigenous community on that component. It's something we're planning on doing at the museum with our next phase of exhibitions. I'm so happy some of you have taken a tour and been so generous with your time and hearing me talk about our plans, but I see that extending outward with our expanded mission of public arts. The other part of that, too, is we don't yet have a framework or a public art policy yet. That's part of the next strategic plan that you all adopted recently. So creating a public art policy that provides the criteria for acquisition, for care, for conservation. So we have a collections management policy at the Oshkosh Public Museum that is the guiding document in what we acquire, why we acquire it, can we take care of it, can we store it, can we make it accessible, to help guide those decisions. So part of what myself, working with the Museum Arts and Culture Board, will be doing early next year, it's like at the top of our list, is creating that document, that policy that you all can lean on to help make those decisions. And so I will be working with variety of departments in helping serve in that advisory capacity way. And so I wish we had that now, but we're so early on in us as a new board. We have the museum part down, we have that, but the public art policy part is forthcoming. And the plan is to get it completed next year, so that way, you as a council, my colleagues have that to lean on, just like at the museum, we lean on our collections management policy to guide those decisions and ensure that we are being appropriate stewards now, but also cognizant of the fact that we're making decisions for the future. We are dealing with lots of decisions that were made 100 years ago that has, you know, not considered certain factors. So just for example, if we put original artwork on the facade of this building and took care of it for 100 years, time for a new building, what happens to it? So those are the types of things that we need to really thoughtfully and mindfully tease out as we make those decisions. So I think, I don't know if I answered everything, but I'm happy to.
As the person who answered it or asked it, I don't think you could have answered[1782.47] it better.
I can keep talking.
And as somebody who doesn't do art or history, you, I thank you for bringing that expertise. When I made the comment sitting in Councilman Larson's seat over there, that's what I wanted, is somebody who has much more cultural literacy and sensitivity than me and has those connections to be able to make that recommendation to us. So I very much appreciate it.
Yeah.
And that's where I went to them.
And I really, I understand that, you know, public trust was brought up, and part of core to museum work is maintaining the public's trust. The public is trusting us to maintain and care for their history, their culture in perpetuity. So in making these types of decisions, we should be really thorough and mindful in doing that and in really being aware of what we're signing up for. I think it's an absolutely amazing idea to engage the indigenous community. We've done so much work already about it, with it. And so I look forward to being able to extend that skill set in that advisory position to my colleagues and other departments as, you know, the community embraces more public art and also cares for and maintains the existing public art that we have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For those at home that have not been to the Oshkosh Public Museum lately, go. They have some amazing exhibits that'll answer a lot of these questions. Sorry, off topic. Anything else? All right, we can take the roll on 24-561, please.
Floem.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Kerit Sixt.
All right, onto 24-562, approve professional services agreement with Seiki Design Incorporated for Landscape Architect Services for Lake Shore Drive, reimagined related to the Water Filtration Plant Clear Walls replacement project.
Move to approve.
Sorry, I cut you off. No, you're fine. Discussion. All right, Councilmember Nichols.
Thanks. As part of the scope here, is there a plan to require, and if you say no, I'm going to make a motion after people have a chance to talk, so that's where I'm going with this. Is there a plan to require indigenous art and require people to work with the ad hoc committee, or this firm to work with the ad hoc committee that existed to determine landscaping for this in the, at the outset?
Excuse me. Yes, that was a, that was a primary reason for us engaging the museum staff to get that information. While, while the firm may not, you know, necessarily work directly with an artist, that's where we would rely on the contacts that the museum and Director Canizo have to, to work that in, but that will be a big part of the overall reimagination is, is having those art, those locations for that information education related to the indigenous population and how it ties together with the themes of the Sturgeon, excuse me, the Sturgeon and the Rice that you'll see when the architectural drawings are presented.
But, but today, the SOW, the scope of work that we're going to sign with the architecture firm does not include the requirement, or doesn't? That's what I was asking. Are they required to designate places for indigenous art and to work with the ad hoc committee? Or is that something that doesn't exist today in the scope?
It's no to the first one and yes to the second one. Your question about, there's details about common council meetings, plan commission, public information meetings, advisory park meetings, design team meetings, page turn meetings, lots of meetings, but I don't see anything that specifically says, you know, engage the indigenous community. I think, James, their intent is to absolutely do that, but it's not specifically mentioned, so.
And, you know, there will be a space incorporated in what they're doing. They may not be the one engaging with the artist, you know, that may be us and the museum staff, but there will be a space, you know, in what they are providing. You know, isn't necessarily called out in the scope of work? No, but that has already been communicated to them in our, our scoping meetings that, you know, this is something that we, we have an expectation of.
And if you have that commitment, and I know it's, we're all being recorded, so everyone's going to look at this video later. If you have that commitment that we are going to engage indigenous artists for public art installations related to this, I think that's going to allay some of the concerns. I know Carl's gotten some emails, I think that's where his question came from. I know I've gotten some emails, that's where, that's where this question's coming from. I want to make sure we are engaging that community. And anytime that we can add public art, I'm looking back at the museum director, I'm all for that. So I support it and appreciate that.
Just as by way of background, one of the reasons that we chose Seiki was they were involved in the Buttermore Causeway, and there was a great deal of interaction with the Native American tribes. And that's, and so actually, the, the Causeway was designed with all of these cultural features, and then when it came to doing that wall that you see over by two brothers, I'm going to show a little love to the engineers, but not much. They liked stripes, and that's when we engaged the museum to come back and say, there are some things we can do. So they modified some, our existing art, that's why Anna's very careful about saying the, you know, original art, it wasn't original art that you see over there, it's inspired by some original art. And that was due to Seiki saying, look, this is what you need to do at the, on the Causeway, and so we just carried on from that. So they're very committed to this. By reputation, they are. But you asked me a specific question, I gave you a specific answer, but I think they'll do exactly how James described it.
And they have a rather long working relationship with the museum already. They have done a number of projects with the museum, and when our staff met with Anna and her staff, they were, you know, extremely complimentary of the work that they have done. And, you know, one of our public work staff has worked with them on a project at a previous employment as well and had amazing success with them.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Floem.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Kerit Sixt.
All right. Resolution 24-563, approve a 2024 neighborhood, great neighborhoods capital improvement plant programs funding in the amount of $72,500. Need a motion in a second?
Move it.
Second. Discussion, and Floem will take us away.
I just want to highlight some of the recommended projects here. Utility box wraps are, I think, really neat. I think they highlight our neighborhoods and how unique they are. I'm outside a lot. I'm running almost every day, and so when you see that kind of stuff, I think it's really, truly nice to look at. I think it's really good for, just good neighborhood identity and seeing the diversity of neighborhoods that we have in town here. And looking at that, I am quite happy to support this, so thank you.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Since you brought up utility boxes, I'm going to plug my neighborhood. My neighborhood was the first one to put neighborhood utility box wraps on it, so we are very proud of those. Midtown.
All right, anybody else? Seeing none, please take the roll on 24-563.
Floem.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Builo.
Aye.
Kerit Sixt.
All right, on to council discussion, direction to city manager, and future agenda items. Item 21A, Oshkosh Area Metropolitan Planning Organization Electric Vehicle Readiness Plan.
The council, we recall that the Transportation Committee had held a meeting that council was invited to. A couple council members were there. I know others watched it and others, you know, followed it with great interest. Mr. Collins is here because part of it was, is there any additional direction that you want to give us? I think really what we're looking for is, and I was asked some questions, are, is our EV projects in the capital improvement plan? The answer is no. The idea, though, is to put ourselves in a position that should funding become available for grants or anything, it's incorporated into a plan. With that knowledge, East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission is having their Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting. Neither the mayor nor myself will be there, but Deputy Mayor Builo will be there. And I believe that East Central is going to adopt it from a regional standpoint. So that means, you know, for the entire Oshkosh area, because it's not just the city, it's the whole Oshkosh region, that they're identifying it as a plan that they accept. And so would you like us to bring this back for a future agenda item? Jim, did I cover that, or is there something else that I missed?
No, I think you covered it pretty well. I know most of council is aware of the plan. I'll just give you a real brief summary. So for the last two years, started a few years ago, we've gotten requests from business owners, the Hotel Convention Center, some other businesses in the area, and visitors as well about electric vehicle charging. And the questions were, what does the city have available? What are the city's plans for EV charging going forward? And at the time, we didn't have anything. So we thought it'd be a good idea to work on this a little bit, get some information. So we worked with the East Central Regional Planning Commission to hire a consultant to help study EVs. And basically what they did is they studied the current market, estimated what the future market is. They got a lot of public input. There were three public meetings. One of them was very well attended, got some input from everybody on what they thought about EV charging and where the city currently is, where the city and the region, as Mark mentioned, should be. Since then, some things have changed, some things haven't. A couple things you might be aware of, you might not, is the, there's a, it's called the NEVI program. It's the National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program that in the last year has awarded some projects in the area. They're going to be putting a level three charging station at the Quick Trip off of Washburn. So that's kind of in the eyes of the plan that was incorporated. So basically, the gist of it is the plan has determined that level one charging, most people are doing at home, that's where they plug in overnight. Level two is something that potentially the city could do, and that would be more for people that are looking to top off their charge if they're going to work, or they're going to the convention center for a couple hours, or they're doing something during the day where they have a little bit of time, then level three would be the quick chargers, which the NEVI plan seems to have covered pretty well. So this is an option for what could the city do if we determine in the future we want to invest in EV charging? And the recommendation was to look at a pilot, selected a couple locations that would be potential. The ones that rose to the top were the parking lot across from the convention center and potentially Lake Shore Park, for different reasons. The convention center being that it's downtown and highly used for visitors and conventions, and as well as employers and employees in that area. And then the park to do something, a little alternative, the infrastructure was put in with the park plans. So, and it would be another, they'd both be pilots to kind of see what the man was and see if that's something that the city needs going forward. So as Mark mentioned, this, it's a plan that was really pretty well thought, a lot of public input over the last year and a half. The MPO will be asking the policy board to adopt it, and the city, should it adopt it, again, it's, you're not committing to funding anything. You're basically just saying that we should have a plan. The Transportation Committee agreed that the city should have a plan. However, they didn't want to vote necessarily for any type of implementation, which I completely understand, because we didn't have details on like, this is exactly what's being asked for, this is exactly what it's going to cost, and council obviously would have to approve that in a budgeting process. So all this plan would do, it would basically make us ready for EV charging, should we decide to apply for grants, number one, or two, in the past, we've had a couple businesses that have offered to potentially donate charging stations. But two years ago, when they asked, it was, we were kind of like, maybe, we don't really know how we would do that or where it would be. Now we have enough information where we could probably offer a little more guidance to that. So that's a real high level just what the plan is all about, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. If nothing else, we'll move on to 21B, the Seventh Avenue Reconstruction Discussion.
Do you have anyone registered for this?
I don't have anybody registered. Did anybody want to come up? And I know most of you got a chance to talk last week, so thank you very much.
Mr. Robbie has an update, and Mr. Garrick, so we can fill you in where we're to date.
Excellent, I think that's what we were looking for.
We're not done yet, but we wanted to keep you up to date.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, as we talked about it, you know, not wanting to make any assumptions about, you know, what you may know of our systems, I wanted to start with a little bit of general background, if you could indulge me with that. You know, so looking at our storm sewer system in the city, I would say around 90% of our storm sewers discharge the water bodies below the normal water level. You know, that really causes water to back up into our storm sewer systems. And as we do sizing calculations to determine what size storm sewers we need to install, that, that is taken into account. Unfortunately, that is a challenge of being a community that was very low, very flat, and built adjacent to a whole lot of water. It was very convenient when the water was the highway and that was what was used. However, as we've transitioned from, you know, water transportation to ground transportation and needing to get the water off of the streets, it's created certainly a lot of challenges for us. And that's why, you know, you see some of the sizes of systems that are installed. You know, I don't remember exactly what was in this one, Justin, do you recall?
It's a six-foot by 12-foot box culvert.
So six feet tall, 12 feet wide, it's very large. You know, we talked in the workshop about congested right-of-ways, you know, 12 feet wide, that's inside, you know, that's got foot walls, that's 14 feet outside. In a 60-foot right-of-way, that's almost a third of the right-of-way, or at least a quarter of the right-of-way is just that one pipe. The water level in the, in Lake Wenobago and the Fox River are controlled by the Army Corps of Engineers via the dams at the north end of Lake Wenobago. So, you know, as far as what the elevation of the water is in the system, again, that's, that's something that is beyond our control and fluctuates with rainfall and how the Army Corps controls the levels in Lake Wenobago via the dams.
They're going to be lowering that soon, right, James?
Uh, we're at the middle of October, so they will be, you know, kind of starting the, the winter drawdown. They start a very slow drawdown through the fall, generally speaking, with a goal to get water down to a certain level by the time ice starts forming. Then they, they really don't want to keep taking it down much past ice out, otherwise you end up with voids between the water and the ice that cause unsafe ice conditions. So they're very conscious of that, but yes, they are, they are starting that drawdown now. Groundwater elevations are, you know, they are very seasonal, and again, given the proximity to the Fox River in this particular case, they can be impacted by the regulation of Lake Wenobago and the Fox River. Getting into this project in particular, you know, given the proximity of the project to the Fox River and the tailwater impacts that we just talked about, there were a lot of design and construction processes that were implemented that are really over and above normal design and construction methodologies. For example, the storm sewer, normally when storm sewers constructed, the joints are just a gasket. You know, there's a gasket slides over, slides over one pipe and it slides in, and it's just a gasket that forms kind of that seal to keep, you know, the water in the pipe, in the pipe. In this particular case, in addition to those gaskets, the outside of the box culvert has been wrapped with a mastic material, again, to provide an additional seal around that storm sewer. Bentonite dams have been installed at all the utility lateral trenches at the right-of-way line. Really, the purpose for that is to reduce the likelihood of, you know, these pipes are bedded in clear stone, so water likes to flow through clear stone. So these Bentonite dams are installed on those utility lateral trenches to keep water that may be following the mainline trenches from following the laterals back up and going directly to the, to the foundations of the buildings. This, this is something that we have experienced on other projects that are very near to the lake and the river. You know, I think of one in particular up at Menominee Drive and Hickory Street. There was a property right on the corner across from the park that, you know, as the project got done, they, they were having some, you know, some similar types of issues with a lot of groundwater and there's some pump running. In that case, we had not installed those Bentonite dams, so we went back after the fact and did install them, and that did, you know, reduce that, that impact that they were having. Additionally, within the right-of-way, there were Bentonite dams installed at the intersection of Sixth Avenue and Iowa Street across all of the utility trenches. Again, the purpose for that is if there's, you know, water trying to run up the pipe bedding from the river, installing that Bentonite dam to isolate that so that, that water can't keep flowing up those utility trenches. So those are a lot of the things that anytime we're working near the water bodies, we are doing those things now because we have learned from past projects that we had to go back and implement after the fact. So we do that as a matter of course. The sanitary sewer in this area was replaced as well. We've seen a lot of times with these old sanitary sewers, they leak. They leak clear water, you know, groundwater leaks into the sanitary sewer system. You know, as, as you've looked at the capital improvement program for the last 15 years, there's been a light item for influence infiltration reduction in the sanitary sewer. This is a big part of that. State and federal laws do require sanitary system operators to eliminate that clear water. So again, replacing the, the old sanitary sewer system that was rather leaky with a new system that is sealed, it's removing a drain point that, that may have been draining some groundwater, but it is a requirement that- some groundwater, but it is a requirement that we are taking those steps. The location of the storm sewer within the rightofway, really, you know, it has no bearing on the groundwater because of all the steps that are being taken to eliminate the, the ability of the, the storm sewer to leak out or leak in. So the location of the storm sewer really doesn't have a bearing on that. A little bit of background on when the contractor started their work. When they started construction on this project, one of the first things they did is they, they installed groundwater de-watering wells so that as they're building the pipes and installing these pipe systems, they're, they're able to work kind of in the dry, if you will. Those pipes, those groundwater wells had to run for a few days to lower the groundwater in the area so they could accomplish that task in that manner. So again, that, that goes to show there, there is a lot of groundwater in the area. Justin and his staff have continued to, to monitor the situation, to meet with people. We are currently in the process of trying to locate a hydrogeologist that could assist us in understanding what may be occurring with groundwater in this area. Generally speaking, hydrogeologists work on a much more macro level. They don't usually get down into a block by block type of a situation. So we, we have been having some challenges. Several of the, the firms and the staff that we've worked with over the years have said, you know, we don't have anybody that can handle that. One of our firms that we have worked with thinks that they may have somebody in another office out of state that may be able to assist us. So, but we haven't gotten down that avenue yet because they have just really notified us that they may have somebody in another state. In the meantime, one of the additional things that we are looking at doing, you know, I mentioned the installation of a Bentonite kind of dam across the utility trenches at Fifth and Iowa. We are looking at doing what's called a, a chemical grout injection, kind of a cutoff wall again on the upstream side of this project. So at Seventh and Michigan, the process there is the contractor will come in and really, they'll, they'll push a wand into the ground and high pressure inject a grout chemical that reacts with water, and it, it forms a seal, a barrier to stop water from moving because, you know, we, we did have to connect to the old system, so there may be water from that old system that's continuing to flow down and adding to these issues. So that is another step that we are working on with the contractor to have done. I have actually used the subcontractor that's doing this work. I have used them in, in other situations, you know, residential areas where we had a city storm sewer main in an easement flowing, you know, from the street through their yard to the lake, you know, the storm sewer pipe itself was maybe seven or eight feet from that particular house, and it was the same thing, they were experiencing water. So we did a very similar thing. We did a ground injection between the lake and that house and another one between the, the street and that house, and, you know, that did resolve the issue at that particular location. So, you know, that is another step that we are taking to try to, to isolate, isolate portions of the project so that we can, trying not to do too much all at once, so we can try to pinpoint what may or, you know, may not be a, a solution. But we are continuing to take steps within the rightaway to try to deal with some of the groundwater. And that, that's kind of the bullet points that I think we had talked about. Mark, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add to that?
I think the, the idea behind that last one that James mentioned, and I've let James do most of this because this is a highly technical type of issue, but the logic that they explained to me was, you know, if this works, then we can maybe look at applying this to other areas. We don't want to do overkill and then not figure out where the source of some of these, these groundwater infiltrations might be. So we'll try one, and then if that works, then we'll take a look and, and hopefully find a hydrogeologist that can help us. This is a very specialized type of thing, especially when, you know, we're so close to the water, there's, the groundwater is, is literally, you know, within a couple of feet of people's foundations and things like that. That's always existed, but clearly, these folks are having new experiences that they didn't have before, and we can't just dismiss it. So we're working on it, and hopefully, I understand about half what James did, hopefully he did better than that, but we know that we need to keep working on this, and we're going to continue working through the, through this until we find somebody that can maybe help pinpoint some of the areas. And we can, and we're happy, if you guys want to hang around, we can talk to you afterwards, fill you in on anything else, but that's kind of where we're at right now.
All right. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. And James, I really appreciate you going through that. That's, like Mark said, that is, the, the technical piece of this is something I'm never going to truly appreciate because I didn't go to school for it and I'm not the expert. So I really appreciate you walking through what it is and explaining it. I know that this is an inherited problem. At a workshop earlier today, I challenged James and said, if we were building a brand new city from scratch, what would you do? And he said, that's something we dream of because you don't have to deal with all the mistakes of the past. So I appreciate.
This would be a similar situation. I'd put more fill in, so we'd be up here.
So, so that's, that's super helpful. And I do see members of, of the Seventh Ave. community here. I was in their homes with Councilmember Larson on, on Friday. I believe Councilmember Flum also joined their homes on Friday, and certainly if, if I were living in, in their situation, I would, I would be concerned and I'd be showing up at, at council meetings like, like they have been. So I appreciate you all staying engaged, and I encourage you all to stick around like the city manager offered and talk about those solutions. I, I know that there was a concern, at the last meeting, concern is too strong of a word. There was discussion about, you know, litigation threats, and I'm sure Lynn can appreciate that by the time it gets to the lawyers, the damage is done and it's, it's kind of too late to have the conversation to fix it. So I'm glad we're continuing to have a conversation here. I think that when parties stop talking to each other and they start calling their lawyers, it's too late. So I'm glad we're continuing to talk. And I guess the last thing I'll say, as, I think we can always take these lessons and apply them to the future. I know, like James said, we, we're a very low-lying community, and I think we may be able to anticipate that these problems could happen in the future. And I think that being overly communicative with neighborhoods when we think maybe this could happen and saying, this is who you call, this is when you call, and this is when we're going to put the brakes on a project. I, I know that there are, and I don't, I'm not going to say who's right and who's wrong, but I, I think that, I'm told that there were instances when the contractor was told something, and I don't know what the communication structure is between the, the contractor and the city, and then the city and the residents. I think those are, those are things that we can certainly improve upon, so I'm happy to brainstorm there or talk about what that could be. I'm not, again, I'm not pointing fingers. But I think if we talk about education, discussion, dialogue, and customer service as a theme here as, as learnings as we look at the next project, just so that we're not in the, in the same situation later where we are inheriting the problems of the past and living in the reality of a low-lying community. But I guess the last thing I'll say is, is I was in their basements and there is an amount of water there that certainly I'd be uncomfortable with. So if we had prepared them that this could happen and this is, these are the steps we're going to take, I think that could have gone a long way. And so for the future, I, I just want to take that lesson, I think. Thanks.
Councilmember Flum?
I would really echo a lot of those. I was in their basements as well, and there is a sump pump in one of them running once a minute at certain times, and she's getting notifications on her phone, and if something breaks, she's out of luck. And she recently renovated the place, and I think when we talk about customer service and communication, it's something that is very key for the future. Notifying neighborhood associations and saying, hey, look, if you see flooding, if you see something, say something. I was sent videos by some of the residents where the street looked like our lake. And I know it's not what the project is supposed to look like at the end of the day, but for residents who know that they're getting their street reconstructed and don't anticipate any sort of flooding, seeing that, that's extremely disconcerting. And so it's not, I mean, it's, this isn't a project that they asked for, this is a project that was put on the CIP, and to have their property values damaged is something that is, something that we could do much better on. And so I know that wasn't, obviously it wasn't the intent to damage anybody's property, but I'm glad that we're working on finding somebody who can help pinpoint this. I'm certainly not an engineer, I do not know half of anything about this kind of stuff. You guys are the experts, but just please keep in touch with them, please let them know when we find somebody to help pinpoint the, the source here, and just make sure that they, they know that we're trying to do everything we can to make sure that this doesn't get any worse for them. So I looked at the storm drain down there, the water level is very high, it hasn't rained in a few weeks, and I know they have concerns about when things freeze and the ice, and I know there are mobility issues. You know, we have residents there who like to go on walks who can't do that anymore. So I appreciate the update on this, I really do, and please keep me and the rest of council apprised on this as well as the residents. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson?
Yeah, all the same, James, I really appreciate the update. I hope you guys appreciate that as well. That was helpful. That's, I mean, that, it shows that why it's important for you to come here and tell us things, and we appreciate the invite to come see it, and it was daunting. It'd be frightening if that was happening to me. So I would encourage you, as DJ did also, to be in touch. Staff is right here, they want to talk with you. So this is that relationship we talked about when we were in your basements also. So hopefully that helps, and I look forward to hearing more about how this gets better going forward.
Just had a, a couple of questions, and I, and I haven't been in any of your basements, but I, I have a wet basement and I know what it looks, smells, and tastes like. Sometimes like you get that just feeling and it's terrible. But the, one of the things you said popped out to me, the water level of Lake Winnebago being controlled by the Corps of Engineers, correct?
Yes.
So even though it hasn't been rainy, that water level has been high, correct? So like, what, what I'm worried about is like, what happens when it does get rainy? Like, are, are we going to have it, is, does it build on top of that, or does the system relieve?
The, the Corps has, and I didn't think to try to bring some of their website information, but the Corps has a, what they call is their Lake Winnebago Operation Strategy. You know, so they have, you know, during the summer navigation season, they have a band that they are trying to navigate and keep the lake within, and there's a gauge station that they refer to a gauge elevation. So when you look at their website and you see a Lake Winnebago elevation, you know, right now you'll see a number probably somewhere around 3.0. Their summer operating band is between 2.9 and 3.2. Those numbers mean 2.9 feet above the, the datum elevation of that gauge station, so 2.9 to 3.3, or 2.9 to 3.2 feet above that. That's what those numbers mean. During the wintertime, they, their, their bottom out is usually around 1.7 feet, and then, you know, the goal is to try to slowly bring that up after ice out during the spring. The strategy's been modified over the years, partially to try to promote submergent vegetation growth to tie up the sediments and the, and the nutrients in the, in the sediment. As far as how high does it get, I believe the highest I think I have ever seen it on the gauge is maybe around 3.6. And at that point, really when they get to about 3.5, we do have a street that has standing water on it. That is not because the storm sewer doesn't drain, it's because that is the river level, and that is Campbell Road just north of the Campbell Creek Bridge. That is the first one to experience standing water on the street, and that happens at around 3.5. You know, so that's, you know, that far above the top of their operating band. So, you know, they're, the swings in the elevation of the lake, usually not more than, you know, two, three, four tenths of a foot, you know, during the summer months. So, you know, when there is a lot of rain, you know, they're continually watching the forecast and they're making changes to the number of gates that are open on the dams. Some of the dams are owned and operated by the Army Corps of Engineers, some of them are under private ownership, but those owners and operators do work with the Corps. So when the Corps says, hey, we need you to do A, B, and C, or X, Y, and Z, as far as opening, opening up gates to try to bring that level down in the lake, you know, they're, they have a very strong working relationship. That being said, they also have to be very cautious about not pushing too much water out of the lake because they have flooding problems on the other side of the dams. In the Nina area, there's an island, I believe it's Scobie Island, when they get over a certain discharge rate out of Lake Winnebago from those dams, it actually floods the island. So they, they, they have to be very, very cautious about where they're, they're running.
One thing I might just add to that is, those are great numbers, but anecdotally, the, if you look in Seventh Avenue, the inlet's out there today, that, the water you see in that, that elevation is the lake and the river. And one of the things that James mentioned early on in this is, we take that into account in the sizing for our sewers. So, where I can't say it's not going to get higher than that, but we do account for that lake and river level pushing back against the storm sewer when it rains. It takes the rainwater to continue to push it out, it's head pressure. So the higher the water is on this side, it's going to all push itself out. So it will take water on this side to get it out, that doesn't mean it's going to flood the street, but it does take water elevation on this side to continue to push it out into the, the lake and the river.
Okay. Thank you very much. One thing I noticed growing up, we had a long country driveway, quarter mile of gravel, and every two years, we had to fill it with gravel in the same spots because water is fairly undefeated in the way that it wants to run. So continue to look at any technology we can, you know, the, the new dams things that you're talking about to try to block up some of the flow to be able to control that because water is, is, I'm not an engineer, but it's a tricky beast like that, so. But please continue to communicate with them, communicate with us on what we're going to be doing here. Anything else? Anybody have on this?
We'll keep this on subsequent agendas.
All right. We have a couple of future agenda items, meetings and workshops coming up, just a small one next week for two days. If you want to cover anything you have before us, I know we all got our copy of the budget.
Just more, just about being there at 8:00 AM. I know that Councilmember Nichols won't be there, so if you got questions, I think, you know, touch base with Julie, and you're welcome to watch it, it will be on video. If you have some sleeping issues, it'll, that'll put you to sleep, but it may, it may inspire you. So certainly we want everybody to, to be there so we can do presentations from each of the departments. I think we sent a schedule out to everybody so you know what the order of appearance will be. So we've got that. And then just a reminder on Wednesday, November 6th, is our, our public hearing, our official public hearing, and then based on the previous sessions as well as the public input session, if there's any final tweaks accounts wants to make, typically they do it at that meeting so that we bring it back to you on November 12th for, for final action.
That's good. Councilmember Ressler?
Yeah, actually, I had a couple of things for future agenda items, if I can get that in there.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Rollup, I had some conversations recently with some individuals to have, and I know Fond du Lac does this, they have a day where they have a garbage pickup day where you can put anything out on the curb, and they come pick it up, and there's no charge or... So I would like some kind of analysis, kind of like we had today on the underground utilities, an analysis on that. Is it, you know, is it a good idea, is it a bad idea? How much does it cost? Do we have the equipment for that? Do we have the employees for that? So just, so if, you know, if Councilmember wants to bring that forward as some type of, implement that as something that we do in the course of a year, I would appreciate that.
Sure. Councilmember Flum answered the same question to me just yesterday, I believe.
Wow, I'm thinking like...
And I had texted you on that as well.
Yeah, or, or maybe, maybe it was Mr. Buolo, now Jacob gave me a look like...
We look, we look really similar.
Yeah. Okay. So I, I don't know if we necessarily need to workshop, but, you know, it's been a couple of years since we've been asked that, and we'll talk to Public Works and have some information that we can provide you.
Okay. The second thing is, I want to touch briefly on the, the issue that was brought up again tonight, the homelessness issue. I know that I've had some contact with you, Mr. Rollup, regarding this, I was going to have a meeting and then it got canceled. Nobody wants this situation, and I, I've got to be candid here, I'm really kind of ignorant to the whole, I mean, why do we have this? I've talked to people that believe that we do absolutely nothing for this situation, and now we're criminalizing it, so I feel sorry for the police. I, I mean, they are in an absolute no-win situation, whatever they do, it's going to be wrong for some people. But the fact is, is if some people are violating the laws or ordinances, you get punished. I mean, I know that's mean sometimes, but that's the way it works. But there is an issue. And so I, I think we need to, myself as a council member, and I think the rest of the, the city should really look at, you know, what, what's going on here? I mean, I know the, the county executive had some issues with people on county property. I know that the chief has discussed a few different issues. So I think, I don't know if we can all get together and talk about this, or has there been something done, or is there something that we're going to do in the future? Because that's what we're here for. I mean, we are here to solve problems, and first of all, we have to understand what the problem is, and then, once we assess what that problem is, if we have the power or the means to do it, we should do, be doing something about it.
The item's not on the agenda, so I don't want to delve into it too much, but Chief Smith will be here next week, and part of his budget is talking about some of the things that the Police Department has done and is proposing to do. That's one, only one aspect of that, and there's a group that's been meeting that one of the outcomes was what Chief Smith is proposing in the budget, but there are other issues, and, and so I think there's plenty to talk about with this and have... plenty to talk about with this and happy to put it on a future agenda. Deputy Mayor Buell and I have had numerous conversations on this very topic because it's not just one thing. I mean, the lady who spoke earlier this evening, shared with you some graphic details about what's out there. And it's not a simple solution. If it was, if it was, this council would approve it in a second. I know that. But there are so many complicating issues. So I would start with Chief Smith in our discussion next week. He's got some information prepared that he's not here this evening and it's not on the agenda. So it is on the agenda next week. And so we can talk about it. And then if you guys want to do a follow-up at a subsequent council meeting, that's entirely appropriate.
Yeah, I think, I'm quite confident that behind the scenes, there have been many meetings and issues brought up and ways of trying to resolve this. But I think it's time now that we come forward and explain what we're doing or not doing, as it were. And say, here are the issues, and we're working on resolving them. Here's what we're going to do. And here's when we're going to do it. Or we're not going to do it. Whatever. I just think that so many people, including myself, and I'm seven council members, I don't understand it. And that's not a good thing. So shame on me. But I think we need to get, we all need to get educated on this and try to resolve it. Because like I said, nobody wants this.
There is technically a little bit on the agenda. So I'm just going to speed ahead and then if you want to keep asking. Under outstanding issues, the second item, about engage governmental and nonprofit entities in the region to reduce and prevent homelessness. And the report is staffs participating in groups organized by the community foundation to review short-term and long-term issues. Report from the group is forthcoming. So there is, the group's been looking at this and been engaged for a good six, eight months so far. And then staff will submit a proposal to respond to group's report in the 2025 budget. Only one aspect of it. It's not the be-all, end-all, but I know Councilmember Larson's aware of it. And I think the chief's prepared to talk about that. So I was able to squeeze it on the agenda for you there. But I think listen to Chief on Tuesday, I believe, is his presentation. And then you guys can tell me where you want to go from there.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
The only thing I'll say to that, since it's kind of on the agenda, and Amber can tell you this as well, if we have 40 unhoused individuals out there, it's not one problem. It's 40 problems. And that's really, it's not a lack of want to. We'll talk more. All right. Councilmember, announcements and statements?
Actually, I have one.
All right. Councilmember Flom?
Coming up, I know that I think most of us were invited to this, the Ashgosh Mung New Year Festival is at Sunny View Expo Center this Saturday. It's all day. So I would encourage everybody to go. It is a fantastic time. I always like to go to the Mung festivals. Excellent food, if you like egg rolls, and great culture and great people. So, great people to go.
All right. If nothing else, we'll go on to city manager announcements, statements.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. In your packet, there's an update on the hours for absentee voting, in-person absentee voting. I don't know if Jake can get it up there. Oh, very good. Thank you, Jake. It started today. And a member of the council had asked that we could run a couple of these events until 7:00 PM. Today was until 7:00 PM. And next Monday will also be to 7:00 PM. Then it's pretty much 8:00 to 4:30 on every day except November 1st, when it'll be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We always go to 5:00 PM on the very last day. And the very last day is the Friday before the election, not the day before the election. That's really crucial to point out. And the council also asked for some Saturday hours. We brought those back. And it'll be this Saturday from 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM. Once again, in-person absentee voting is at 19 East Irving, which is at the corner of Jefferson and Irving. So please know the location because it's not at City Hall this year. Statewide, there were some issues, some printing issues because it sounds like the computers were slow. I'm going to defer to Diane, although she's been wrestling with this all day.
Yeah, it's been a long day. I did forward you a message that I received from the Wisconsin Election Commission. I also sent it on to you, Mark. They are aware of the problem. The problem was down in Madison. There was a holdup with us printing the actual labels that go on the actual absentee envelopes. So it was just very slow. That's why I think we had the major line. If it was at City Hall today, nothing would have been different. It has nothing to do with our connections or anything. It was just down in Madison and it was an issue. I hope to have a number, maybe tomorrow, to let you know how many people came through today. And then I could tweak it and find out what's going on for the rest of the dates that we have.
Would love to see that number tomorrow.
Yeah, I'd like to see what today was. They're not answering me. Either they're ignoring me or they're really busy.
And just because it's related to voting and we're two weeks away, there is a city drop box as well. Is that right?
Thank you. Yes, it is located right outside City Hall and you can drop it off 24/7. And we pick it up regularly. So it's very secure. It's attached to the building. So it doesn't walk away or anything like that. So we feel very confident that your ballots here are very safe and secure. Thank you for asking that. I have a few more things. The third quarter strategic plan dashboard has been posted and you're welcome to look at it. And Mr. Fitzpatrick, I'm sure can answer any questions you might have or with some of the departments. Couple memos in the packet regarding some grant agreement with the Public Service Commission for an energy innovation grant that we're going to be receiving. A cooperative purchase of a leaf vacuum for a stormwater utility. And with the leaves falling, the vacuum is very important. Professional services agreement for our elevator modernization consulting for the library and the public museum. We're doing them together and saving some money doing that. And then roof replacement survey for general services. Our budget has an allowance for roof replacement. Every few years, we do a survey just to reprioritize our projects so we kind of know where we're at. And then I have outstanding issues. Councilmember Wesslinger brought up the homeless issue. Certainly happy to answer any questions if you have any additional questions about anything else in that, other than that. That's all I have.
With apologies, I actually missed Councilmember Flom.
So Clerk Bartlett, in your email, it says that WEC has added capacity to the system. So it should have been resolved this past afternoon so voters could expect potentially shorter waits tomorrow? Is that correct? Fingers crossed. Okay.
I hope so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
From your lips.
Yeah, you're right. Anybody else have anything? All right. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not even talking about it.